Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. We're going to start out this evening by just a couple of quick housekeeping items. First order is to review and sign some bills. First up would be a bill for $590.70 to the Community Advocate for the May 23rd, 2024, legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next is a bill to Weston and Sampson for 33 through 69 Green Street, wastewater peer review fees for $1,450. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have a bill to Graves Engineering for 3369 Green Street, second peer review fee for $1,258.93.
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And lastly, bill to Bowman for the 3369 Green Street Site Plan Review Fee for $903.
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. First item on our agenda, this is a 6:30 hearing to hear the appeal of Bradford Ralt of 20 Mann Street, Number 3, Worcester, Mass. 01602 for a special permit and variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B and Section 2, to construct an in-law apartment in a detached accessory structure upon property located at 28 Ridgeland Road in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 39, Plot 021000. We do have a motion to continue this hearing?
Yes, to the June 24th?
June 17th.
Well, that may, if you want it at that one, or the regularly scheduled June 24th meeting.
Okay.
We're doing both.
Okay. So could I get a motion to approve to the June 24th meeting, please?
Sure. Move to continue this hearing to June 24th at 6:30 PM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Next on the agenda, this is to hear the appeal of Mark Paris of 19 Ashwood Circle, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6B, to create a lot with a lot shape factor of .41 where a minimum of .45 is required upon property located at 13 John Street in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 45, Plot 019001. Mr. Paris, would you like to step forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Could you state your name for the record?
Sure, Mark Paris.
Give us a little idea of...
So I purchased a property at 11 John Street in October of 2022, with the understanding that I was going to subdivide the property and have a buildable lot next to it. So I purchased the property, the property closed in October, and I hired a local engineer who did subdivide the property for me. And he stamped it, gave me all the approvals, which I submitted to the town. The town engineer signed off on it. And so they signed off on the plan, and they gave me a street number, which is known as 13 John Street. So I assumed that since I had it, I relied on the engineer, that I would have an approved subdivitable, you know, lot. So I went and I sold the house, 11 John Street. At that time, a builder from town, a local builder, approached me about buying the lot. He wanted to build the house for his son. So I agreed to sell him the lot. So we had a purchase and sale agreement signed. He took the paperwork from the engineering department and from the engineer, and he went to the building department, and the building department said, "Your line is off." I have some exhibits here. I don't know if anybody wants handsout, or if you even...
We probably have everything that you submitted in the Google Drive, unless there's any new information that was not submitted?
No.
Okay.
You know, I just, I have a picture of the lot, and it shows the angle that was off by a half inch. And it was, I believe, over like 50 feet. It was like two square feet. So the building department would not sign off on the lot. So I had to approach the people that I sold the house to at 11 John Street, and they agreed to allow me to change the angle, which was a half inch over. But I had to hire an, well, not hire, I had to hire an attorney, and then they had to go through the process of the bank signing off, which was in California. So it was a little bit of a process. So that was approved, stamped by the engineer. And then I resubmitted it to the town, and the engineer signed off. They gave it back to me. Then I went back to the building department, and they said, "Well, that now is a, it's called a lot shape factor." I really didn't have any idea of what it was. "And you're at .41, and it needs to be .45," or "It can't be under .45." So that's the reason why I'm here. Now, in the meantime, the town sends me a tax bill for $225,000. They valued the lot. So I went to the assessor's office, and they said, "Well, the building department said with a small variance, that is a buildable lot. So you have to file for an abatement," which I did. And so...
Through the chair. Just a clarifying question. They sent you a property tax bill for $225,000 for a .28 acre lot?
Yes.
Okay. Continue.
So they sent, so I filed the abatement. They reduced it to 167. So they still want me to pay the taxes. So I said, "Well, this, you're saying it's not a buildable lot, but you want me to pay the taxes on it." So I don't know. I was a little confused. And in the meantime, we also had a meeting up here, all the people from John Street. It's a dirt road right now. And the town has agreed to pave the road. So now we're going to be assessed a betterment. And I actually, I voted for it without even knowing that I had a buildable lot, because I was just doing it to maybe help the people on the road. So that is the reason why I am here.
Okay. Louise, anything else to add?
Oh, and one thing I did want to add, too. I also created a landscape easement when the lot was subdivided, so that basically, the house that I sold the people to, 11 John Street, they have a landscape easement to landscape that, do whatever they want. And that was filed by Jason St. Pierre, Attorney St. Pierre, that landscape easement.
All right. Want to roll through with questions, comments, before we open it?
Yeah. So let me start off by saying I fully understand your frustration. It sounds like you've gone through quite a number of different steps with this, and I can understand that this was obviously a hassle and unpleasant. I think the issue that I see for us is that the bylaw, the intent of, we are allowed to grant a variance when granting the variance is in the spirit of the bylaw. The clear intent of this provision of the bylaw is to prevent anyone from building a house on a lot with a factor of less than .45. So I, my thought is that this might not be a problem that we are empowered by law to fix for you. It sounds like perhaps the private engineer might have made a mistake. I don't know. It sounds like the planning department and the building department might not have been on the same page. I don't know. But variances are supposed to be reserved for things where, if we enforce the law as written, it would cause a hardship. And I'm not sure that this qualifies where the point of the hardship is, the end result is something that the bylaw doesn't intend. And here, the whole point of the bylaw is to prevent someone from building a house on a lot that's less than .45. So it's a little bit of a, I fully appreciate your situation and how frustrating it is. I'm just not sure we're the ones who are empowered to fix it for you, if that makes sense.
So can I ask a question, or is...
Through the chair.
So the, I submit a plan that is stamped by an engineer to the department upstairs, the engineering department. And then they sign off on it, and they give it back to me. And then it's recorded. The attorneys record the deed and the whole plot. So how am I supposed to, like, and then they give me a street number, and now they're taxing me on it. Like, how am I supposed to, like, I just, I guess I was confused, because I went through the process twice where the engineer signed off. So I guess I'm wondering, what is the point of even having it signed off from the engineer?
Oh, yeah.
If you take it downstairs, and then they're like, "Well, you know what? I'm sorry."
Yeah.
Because I never would have sold that house, because I could have done it a different way.
Right.
And it was a very, it was an easy way. It would have cost me a little bit more money. I could have easily done it. But I sold them the house, so now I'm handcuffed.
No, I hear you. And please don't misunderstand me. I totally understand where you're coming from. I'm just thinking in terms of the legal framework under which this board operates. I'm not sure that this is something that normally fits in the category of the kind of thing that we can fix via a variance. And I think, you know, to your question, in terms of the planning department versus the building department sign off, my understanding is you need to check all of those boxes and able to go forward. So having one by itself isn't enough. But I can also appreciate as sort of a, from the standpoint of the consumer, right? You're coming to this process, and you're saying, "Well, they've signed off, and they've given me a street number. Doesn't that mean I can build a house?" And so I appreciate that that isn't as clear as it probably could be in terms of the process. So I'll pause there.
I'm just wondering if they should have, like, you should have a checklist. Like, when you go to the engineer department, they say, "Hey, I just want to let you know, once we sign this off and assign you a street number, and you record it..."
You still have to go here, and then...
Just, "Hey, Mr. Paris, run down here and just do this." It's like, "Okay, here you go," you know? I mean, it's, this is the second one. I haven't even recorded it yet. But it's all signed off from the town. I mean, from the engineering department.
Right.
And it's like...
I totally understand what you mean.
All right. Hold that thought. Louise, what?
So Louise O'Neil, the Assistant Town Planner. So it's definitely a flawed system, and I wasn't here when you, you know, approached the, doing this ANR process. And so what the town engineer looks at through, like, mass general law, when he looks at creating a new lot, is just the frontage and the square footage of the lot. And so it's definitely a flawed system. So, you know, we do apologize for that. You know, and it's unfortunate how small the planning board endorsement, you know, caveat says right above Jarvis's, you know? And so that is unfortunate, just say, you know, the planning board endorsement does not determination, you know, the conformance to the zoning bylaws, so.
Oh, I see that there.
There's a, wait, disclaimer on the top of the stamp. Okay, let's proceed with more questions. Ann?
Right. So I also echo Peter's extension of sympathy for the frustrations that you've had. I think I'm headed in the same direction. We are constrained in our inquiry as to the legal criteria for variances. Unfortunately, all the mistakes that had been made to this point aren't one of those criteria. There has to be a soil condition or shape or topography of the land or structure or otherwise, which would allow us to grant a variance. I'll also note that even if that line, that's sort of jogging down towards the number 11, even if that wasn't incorrectly drawn, I think you're only achieving the square footage by virtue of that landscape easement, I believe, adding square footage.
Yeah.
So it's a very strangely shaped lot to begin with. So, and I just want to clarify one thing. When you say the line was drawn a half inch off, do you mean a half inch to scale, which would actually be 10 feet?
No, it was a half inch.
But carried over the length of the line?
So the line was supposed to be on an angle of whatever the angle's supposed to be, but the line was off by a half inch. So over 50 or 60 feet of that 70-degree angle, it was a total of two square feet.
In other words, the angle was off by a half inch?
It was off by a half inch.
And ends up being large.
Okay.
Yes. So I had, that's when I went back through the whole process, and we got the bank involved, and they signed off on it. And so then I resubmitted the whole plan again. And they're like, you know, so, yeah.
Well, we do appreciate your attempts to comply with the law. There's, you know, certainly, we see that. But I think that's all I had.
And I don't have anything further to add than what the two before me have added. They've said anything I was going to say, and unfortunately, I'm inclined to agree with them. It's a sticky situation, but again, we're kind of hamstrung.
Okay. David?
I just want to confirm that on the plan, it says 12,567 square feet. That includes the landscape easement?
Yes.
So then without the landscape easement, that brings you down to 10,829 square feet?
Yes.
Which is below the minimum lot size for any zone in the town? So if it's because of that, that, you know, you have to have the landscape easement to hit the square footage requirement, which makes this, like everybody else has said, I understand your frustrations with the process. But that just, it makes it clear to me that that is not with what the intent of Section 7B10 is going after. Because that lot shape factor, if the result is a 1, it's a square. If it's 0, it's a straight line. And so that's where it's defined at .45, is that, that's the line where an irregular lot is not acceptable versus acceptable. So unfortunately, we're on that side of it.
Yeah. If it's helpful, when we adopted that provision, the sort of goal of it was to avoid what were variously called dogleg, tomahawk, lamb chop shaped lots. And so that's why I say, when I look at this, it's sort of very squarely what the bylaw was designed to not allow. And so the idea of the variance typically is to say, "If we followed the rules exactly, it would actually do something that wasn't the intent." Here, following the bylaws exactly is doing exactly what the bylaws intended to do. And so we're kind of stuck with it as a board.
If, as far as, you know, your next steps, you know, I did some back-of-the-envelope math. If you could manage to secure a purchase of the lot behind you for another 20 feet by 88 feet, that would get you to the 12,500. I don't know what any of the other options would be, or if that landowner would be amenable to that. But as Peter said, the panhandling, like...
Handle, right.
Or is one of the other words?
The many different terms we use to...
Yeah, yeah. That's the purpose of that part of the bylaw.
I mean, to me, it's just you've done everything that you can possibly do to try to abide by the intent of the laws. And this small, little, I mean, it seems like a folly of errors to me. One thing after the other, after the other. We're hung up on the idea that a variance needs to have hardship. And that's the hard part. You know, we have to run it through that test. And to me, the answer is definitely trying to do some horse trading, so to speak, with your neighbor behind.
Yeah, he said no. He didn't reply back.
I just, I mean, these are the unfortunate things that come in front of us that we just...
No, I know. No, I, hey, I understand. I just, I'm the one who's probably, well, I do think that the town kind of didn't kind of coach me a little bit and say, "This is, you know, and they're still taxing me on it, and I'm still going to get a betterment when they run the, when they run it by, when they pave the street." So, you know, but I'm going to have to now stand up for that and say, you know, "Guys, you're telling me it's not a buildable lot. You want to tax me." They still tax, yeah, they're taxing it for 168,000 from 225. So they lowered a little. But they're saying it's not a buildable lot. So why should I pay for, the value of that land without being a buildable lot is $500 for the guy's yard next door.
Well, that's a tax assessor question, for sure.
Right.
So let's move on. It is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? Sir? If you could, please come up to the microphone and, if you don't mind.
Can we bring one over to you?
Sorry. I would have had you sit over there.
Oh, that's all right.
And if we could ask you to state your name for the record and your address, please? Thank you.
I'm Harry Richardson. I live at Number 17, John Street. And I just wanted to say just a couple of words. I'm not sure, is it called an easement where the, on the boundary lines, you can't build anything for, what is it, three feet?
Oh, the building envelope, setbacks.
Huh?
The setbacks.
I don't, I'm not very good at hearing.
It's a setback.
It's a setback.
Oh. Okay. Well, when I go out to the side of my property, I can take a baseball underhand and throw it hard and hit the house next to me. So it, I don't know, it's a nice lot, but I'm not sure how I'm going to build a, what size house you're going to build there.
Well, I don't know if I'm going to be doing anything right now.
All right. Through the chair.
So that's, it's just, it seems like a small place. And I'm not sure that the folks in that house, do they know what's going on? Because they're new to this country.
Yes.
And they, they're not sure about what's going on. You ask them something, and they're not sure. Because their kids are always playing, they have a net set up in the back there and all, and I'm not sure what's going on. So I just wanted to mention that, that the houses are kind of close. Maybe you folks should go down there and take a look at it.
We did, I did.
Really?
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input. Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. All right. Might I get a motion? I do think that we are unfortunately all on the same page, and really, not a whole lot that we can do. So if I could get a motion, please?
I'll take the unhappy duty of doing that one. I move to deny the application for a variance under Section 7B, Sub 10, to create a lot with a lot shape factor of .41 where a minimum of .45 is required at 13 John Street, Residence B2 District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. It's the unpleasant part of our job. All right. Next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of L. Brian Cheshire of 11 Lexington Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to remove and replace an existing carport, three feet and four tenths feet from the side yard, where 20 feet is required upon property located at 11 Lexington Road in the Residence A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 26, Plot 110047. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Brian Cheshire.
Good evening, Mr. Cheshire. If you could talk to us about what you're here for.
So I have an existing carport slash garage in that same location. It's been there since 2005. It's, needs replacing. And I'd like to replace it with one that's just a little bigger. It won't come any closer than the 3.4 inches of feet that it is now. I went through this process in 2020. We all remember that year. And I went before the Zoning Board of Appeals to do the replacement, and it was granted. But because of a lot of reasons related to our situation at that time, I never could get the materials and file the building permits, so it expired. So I came back, I'm resubmitting basically the same thing, except that the structure that I would like to put in is a little larger than I had originally asked for in 2020. It goes a little bit farther back, and it goes a little bit closer to my house, but it does not encroach on the 40 and 20-foot set, the 40-foot setback in the back or the distance from my home. I had a new plot plan surveyed by Jarvis to confirm it. He put in the 18 by 28 structure and showed that it did meet setback criteria.
Okay. Thank you. Louise, anything further to add?
No, that, about something's up.
Okay. You open up to the board for questions, comments. Peter?
I voted for it in 2020. I continue not to see any issues with it, so I'd be inclined to approve.
Okay. Ann?
I agree with Peter.
Okay. Kevin?
I wasn't on the board, but I'm inclined to agree with my members before me.
David?
Same here. I'm inclined to agree. It's like-for-like. It's not asking for any increase in relief. And like you said, it doesn't violate the 10 feet from the house. So I am all for it.
Okay. Great. I have no issues with it either. I was on the board when you were in front of us in 2020. So this is a public hearing. I'd like to open it to anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter. All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B to remove and replace an existing carport, three feet and four tenths feet from the side yard, where 20 feet is required at 11 Lexington Road in the Residence A District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. That is the finality of our public hearings this evening. Next on our agenda, I am going to need, this is a continuation of our, from our March 25th hearing for the 3369 Green Street 40B with Pulte Homes of New England, 1900 West Park Drive, Suite 180, Westboro, Mass. This is a comprehensive permit to permit the construction of a 300-unit multifamily residential development. I do have procedurally asked Ann to sign a Mullins notification. And if you could step forward, please?
Is the paper under all of your folders?
The bottom there.
There it is. Sign right there. Ann was not at the last meeting, so she has attested to the fact that she's listened to our last meeting. Here's a... Thank you.
Yeah. Could you mute your computer?
Yep.
There we go. Should be all good.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm trying to technically...
That's okay.
Technically.
Got it?
All right. I can't do multiple things at once apparently. And I'm chewing gum. That's just, I'm... Good evening. Thank you. Again, Essek Petri with Pulte Homes.
Mark Mastriani. I work with Essek Petri, Pulte Homes.
So tonight, like you mentioned, this is a continuation from the March meeting. Tonight, we want to kind of do a recap of the process that we're at, go through just really briefly the peer review process. We had sent in some sections since our last meeting, and we want to take the opportunity to walk through those in a little bit more detail and provide some descriptions and context behind those. And we were also hoping to have the opportunity to go through waiver list that we sent over. We've been coordinating with town staff over the past couple of weeks. So just again, really quickly, I don't want to belabor on this. We've, this is public hearing number...
Not to put you off. I don't know for the public, that didn't change with your screen. Is that, that's better?
Oh, it's because it's sharing a different screen. All right, I'll just keep it right here to, easier.
Sorry.
No, no. I apologize.
Oh, it says it's, are we in, is it in presentation mode or no?
Is the screen the same?
So that's changing.
Is this?
Yeah. It looks...
We'll have to show it on this. I apologize. I don't know why it's not displaying on... Try one last thing. Just.
There it is.
There we go. All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Um, okay, so here, we're at public hearing number six tonight, where, as I mentioned, we're gonna be going through, um, peer review, primarily the sections and the waivers are what we're hoping to spend some time, uh, talking about this evening. Quickly, just, uh, the peer review, um, since that last meeting that we had in March, uh, there were still a few outstanding items at that point, but, uh, we have, um, fully closed those. We worked with Graves Engineering, Bowman Consulting, and Weston and Sampson, um, on all those peer review letters and comments that they had, and, uh, have successfully, um, closed those items with those peer review, um, letters. So let's just dive right into these sections, and, um, this is gonna be, uh, open, so if you have questions, if you wanna speak to something in particular, please, uh, at any point, uh, stop me or ask questions. Um, the goal of this is to really give a good understanding of, um, what we had talked about at that last meeting as far as giving some context to, um, the, the abutters, particularly along Appaloosa Drive. Uh, so our, um, civil design, uh, and engineer has put together these sections, uh, Matt Leidner from Civil Design Group. Uh, in particular, we chose two locations, uh, at fourteen and App- uh, fourteen and eighteen Appaloosa Drive. They're two of the closer homes, uh, to, um, to the, the development along Appaloosa. And we also took two sections from each, kind of one looking towards the lower tier of the development and one looking towards the upper tier of the development. This is, uh, how they were presented. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to see these and take a look at these. So just to dive into them a little bit deeper, starting with section one, which was looking at what we're calling, uh, the upper tier, uh, from Appaloosa Drive, eighteen Appaloosa Drive, excuse me. So I'll stop here, 'cause it is a lot on this screen. Uh, there's, the, up top, there are two photos that were taken this week, kind of from App- from Appaloosa Drive, looking towards where, uh, the development will be in that general direction. Again, the top right is the inset showing, um, where that section is cut. And then that bottom section, what that represents on the right side, uh, is eighteen Appaloosa Drive. On the left side is our building massing for, uh, building four, uh, as the arrow indicates. Uh, the, the brown terrain in between those, that's, uh, existing grade, and you can see that the, the house and the, the building are at roughly the same grade. Uh, the buildings are over five hundred feet apart, uh, and there is, uh, at least over three hundred and sixty feet of existing wooded, uh, forest that is gonna remain untouched between those, uh, two structures. And you can see from both the photos and from that section, uh, kind of, uh, look at, from the back of the house, uh, you're really looking strictly into that forest, which again is, it's three hu- over three hundred and fifty feet deep of forest before you get to the property where, um, the, the building would, uh, building would stand. And so from the same home at eighteen Appaloosa, uh, this section, again, looking at the, the lower tier. So to the right, if you're looking at the house. Same context photo from earlier this week, uh, looking at the back of the house and the existing forested buffer, uh, that's there today. Uh, you can see in the section below, the terrain is, is different, um, it makes sense that this is the lower tier, so, uh, the building number three, uh, it's, it's at a lower elevation than, uh, building four, and it's also, excuse me, lower than, uh, the elevation of eighteen Appaloosa. And see again that, uh, primarily, uh, that there is a significant of three hundred and eighty feet of forested buffer uh, between the eighteen Appaloosa and, uh, building three in this location, and over five hundred feet overall of total distance.
Madam Chair, if I can just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Um, just wanna make sure I understand the significance of this. Are we, the photograph is taken from the street. Is the analysis, are we representing that from the homes you won't be able to see the buildings? Or are we just noting that they're far apart and there's a lot of forest in between?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make a claim that, that, that you're not gonna be able to see the buildings. That's not what our intent here is. The intent here was just to show from a actual engineering perspective, like, what the, you know, there is a building here and there's a building here.
Geometry.
What the elevation is, the distance between them, and the amount of for- existing forested buffer between them.
Okay.
Um, the photos, I do think help demonstrate how thick and, um, you know, tall the, the existing forested buffer is, but certainly don't wanna make a claim that you won't be able to see a building.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, one way or the other. Thank you.
Uh, and then again, we took, uh, a couple of sections from fourteen Appaloosa Drive, a little bit further down the hill, looking towards the same two buildings, uh, section three being looking up towards the, the upper tier at building four. Again, see the context, uh, you know, over five hundred and thirty feet of distance between the two structures. Uh, again, the terrain, you can see that, you know, fourteen is lower down on Appaloosa, building four the upper tier. Again, it, it makes sense, it follows that terrain. Uh, and again, there's over three hundred and thirty feet of existing forested buffer uh, between the two structures that it will be untouched.
I have a quick question about this slide. So we see building four to the extreme left of this slide, and then there's sort of like a trench with, it's just a brown trench with nothing in that. Is that gonna be parking, or what goes there?
So that is just representing, um, what the grade will be. If you look at the, um, orange arrow in the top right picture, the inset,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it goes over, that's where the drive will be, the private drive, and some of the adjacent green associated with that. So in that, what does look like a trench, uh, in that, um, you can actually make out some of the, the crown of the, of the drive that's in there. Um, and it, that's, it'll be the, the drive as well as the, uh, adjacent green space next to it.
Okay, thank you.
So that also wouldn't mean that the dashed line indicates the existing grade prior to development?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then this was the last section that we cut, um, fourteen Appaloosa again, but looking towards, uh, the lower tier of building, uh, building three. Most adjacent, buildings are three hundred and eighty feet apart. Uh, again, still there's two hundred and fifty feet of, uh, existing wooded buffer uh, between those two locations. The intent of these was again to, to demonstrate, um, to, to the, the neighbors and the abutters, kind of what the context of this development would be relative to, specifically to Appaloosa, um, it was, you know, was requested at that, the last meeting. Happy to talk through any of these in more detail or answer any other questions before we move past this.
So there's really nothing we can change about what you're presenting? I am not an engineer, and so visually, that I'm not asking you to do anything more. I would just be remiss if I did not state that what I was hoping to see was a picture of the house with a superimposed example of what they're going to see of the building. If I lived in fourteen or eighteen Appaloosa, that would be what I'd wanna know, just to set, um, you know, expectations. I'm not asking you to change it. Um, apparently, you don't have the technology to be able to do that, or you would have done it presumably. But, um, I think that's what, what the neighbors seem to be struggling with, is just what are we going to see? And so I just, I just would wanna go on record as saying, I was hoping to see more of like a superimposed picture, but we don't have that, so.
If I could build on that also, that was part of the reason for my question, is that in the past, I recall in particular, there was a cell phone tower um, to be built in the area of, of South St- I wanna say South Street or Spring Street.
Spring Street.
Um, where they did a, a view study, and slides were presented to us that showed a photograph, and then using GIS, essentially placing what it would look like as built, so that people could see what exactly they would see from the various, uh, viewpoints. And so that's why I wasn't sure if these photographs were representing that. In other words, that from this viewpoint, you will not be able to see the buildings. So I, I echo the chair that, that, that is sort of what I had expected, um, and it would have been nice to have. And I can understand why the residents, um, might have appreciated that, but maybe it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we asked for it, um, I, I don't know the correct terms to use. But I, I go back to the Spring Street example where they did the balloon, like, to me, the balloon test
Right.
really showed me what we were talking about. And again, we couldn't change it, it is what it is, but it just is helpful for those of us that are not able to see contours of land the way apparently you do, to just be able to, um, express to the public that we gave them what they were asking for. Um, again, I, I, I'm not sure that there's really a whole lot that we can change about this, but that has been my concern all along.
Just one comment, so I, I hear the comment, the con- the concern. So in the past, on prior jobs, we have done those perspectives. Um, but we've done them for sites where there are no woods between the new construction and the existing home or the existing structure, so you can demonstrate what the project would look like. I think if we, you know, honestly, were to do a perspective from these, from any of the locations, these or any of the homes on Appaloosa, where, it's, there's so much wooded buffer in between the new structure and the existing structures. Our view would be looking right into the trees, and we would do a disservice to us by showing this big building, because that's not re- in reality, what you're going to see. And as Essex said, honestly, I can't tell you that you're not gonna see the building in the distance. I mean, that's, it's, it's not, you, you, probably certain times a year, you're gonna see it more than others, like now. But I think the section show that there is a significant separation between the new buildings and, and the existing buildings, and there's, and there's a significant wooded buffer that also exists. I mean, if you, if you're doing a new development, sometimes the setback is like fifty feet. And sometimes there's a requirement in your zoning of like a twenty-foot, you know, wooded buffer. I mean, we're sort of fortunate here, luckily, that there's such a there's such a distance between the development and the existing homes, but I just wanna now say, uh, we understand the concern and the comments of the neighbors. Any change is always very difficult. We, we get that, but I do think that the proposal is respectful of, of the existing neighborhood, and, and I think the sections do show that pretty accurately, that the new structures will not be towering over or right in somebody's backyard. Yes, you probably may see them, but I, I think there's a significant distance and wooded buffer that really, um, is really i- i- is fair, i- is, is good. And if we did do that perspective, our architect would just show trees. Uh, and if we didn't show trees, we would, we wouldn't be doing our job, because there are trees between the homes and the new structures. Um, and if we did, and if we did a balloon test, there would be a balloon in the middle of woods, and, and and our consultants kind of advised us that that isn't really that effective for this application either, because they work better when you're in, when, when they're not in the middle of the woods.
Madam Chair, if I might just offer a response. We are here as the representatives of the homeowners, people in town. My thought would be that if what you anticipated was that you did the balloon test and all you could see was the woods, that would have been great. That's kind of the point, um, to sort of reassure people about what exactly they can expect and to sort of get their buy-in. And so, again, it is what it is, maybe a bit of a missed opportunity, um, but to the chair's point, we would be remiss if we didn't raise it.
So I actually wanna just interject, I don't know that it's a missed opportunity yet. Um, and, and I wasn't at the last hearing, but I, I watched it, and I know how important this issue is to the neighborhood and to the board. If it's not possible to get a visual representation of what it might look like, what might be helpful, and which I know some smart math engineer person could do, is tell us how many feet above the tree line the building might stick up as viewed from Appaloosa Drive in front of one of these houses. I, that's probably a calculation somebody could do, and it would be a point of information we could give.
That was the, the, one of the intents of this, the, the sections was to give a little bit more context as opposed to presenting a rendering that showed a view from somebody's deck that looked at trees. It felt, it felt like it wasn't, it, it wasn't gonna give people anything, and, and, you know, 'cause today, if you went out at, for instance, eighteen Appaloosa and stood in that back deck, you would see a thick forest, you would not, you know. And so it didn't feel appropriate to come here and put that up on the screen. So this, um, section gives some context to that to provide that homeowner. The reason why a perspective, um, of today at May twenty-second, twenty-third, um, that's what your view would be because of the distance, uh, between those. Uh, and, uh, you know, to, as far as the, the the, the mathematical equation of providing somebody with that view, this is what that is intending to do. The challenge with, um, you know, it's hard to pick one specific area. Appaloosa is, you know, um, going one direction and, you know, from a, um, you know, vertical curved perspective, and the site is going another direction. So as soon as you go ten feet down Appaloosa and you come ten feet up, your view corridor is gonna change dramatically. Not to mention that this is representative of a forest. We are all very familiar that a forest does not grow like, uh, you know, somebody puts in CAD and there's a tree there, there's a tree there. So it, it's also would be a challenge that every time that you took ten steps in one direction, your view corridor is gonna change just because the nature of nature is gonna be different from what you're looking at in the vantage point. So that was where we ended on the sections, because we felt it gave the most full site context as far as, um, what we think that would be seen and why that is.
I do happen to agree that sections achieve
You what?
Kind of what they're looking, the sections do achieve, kind of what we've been asking for, and not so much as a visual representation of pictures, but having been in the architecture field and still working adjacent to it, if section number four happens to be your worst-case scenario, or close to your worst-case scenario,
We picked it.
and assuming scales are correct, scale trees are correct, and liberties haven't been taken, you're really not gonna see the top of this building unless you're standing on a roof. And my interpretation of what residents have been telling us throughout this process is that they're worried they're either sitting in their backyard or driving down the street, and they can see the top floor of this building, or multiple floors of this building that are looking right into their backyards. Which, again, if section four is the worst-case scenario, and even if it isn't, but it's close enough, that's most definitely not gonna happen here. So if I was, if I was a resident, and I don't know if you've shared these with residents, or if residents have viewed them, there doesn't seem like there's
Hopefully, they're watching.
Hopefully, they're watching. Um, I would feel a lot better about it. Obviously, nobody wants this giant, um, community in their backyard, but again, it's shown that there's this big buffer which you could fit a baseball field in, so I would feel better about it, which makes me feel better.
Just to, um, answer directly to that, one of the reasons that we also chose number fourteen was also be- because it's one of the closer, but also because, uh, the owner was one of the, um, abutters who came to, I think it was two meetings ago now, and, and spoke up, so we wanted to speak directly to him and, um, and, and his concerns. And I think that it would largely be due to the fact that it looks like he just, he just recently put in a patio and a pool back there, similar to what you're saying, as far as having a, you know, building over towering over that, and, and, um, again, the, the intent of this section is to demonstrate that. Um, again, it's not to demonstrate that we don't think that the, the residents of Appaloosa will be able to see a building at any point during, whether they're driving down Appaloosa, but from their backyard or from their back deck, uh, when they're enjoying their privacy of their back area, it is not gonna be looming over them or looking into their back area, or they won't be, you know, in- invasive.
I mean, two hundred and fifty-two feet is not insignificant, um, nor is three hundred and eighty-eight if I'm reading that cor- properly.
Correct, yes. It's over a football field with end zones, uh, you know, from every one of those.
Yep.
And that's the worst case, as Kevin mentioned.
Okay. David?
Everybody's pretty much covered everything. I'm, I'm more in agreement with Kevin in that this does depict to me what I think it needs to. I think a balloon test also would have been good, as well as other visualizations, but I, I come from an engineering background, so, uh, getting the, um, the sections like this is, is, is helpful for me. Uh, I do ask though, is, did you, um, what data source did you use for the, to the, like, the diagram of number fourteen and number eighteen? Uh, did you ju- like, 'cause I see the top you have at elevation five-ten for those homes.
So the elevation is accurate based on existing topography?
Okay.
The, the house, to be completely fair, is probably undersized for what's at, on Appaloosa. It's a more of a standard, traditional, um, single-family home, um, but it's based on what a standard, traditional, single-family home height would be.
Okay.
So you, just to be clear, you did not, like, measure fourteen to show, I can't see the number.
Do you wanna answer that, ma'am?
He looked ready. Matt's ready to Matt's ready to...
I'm the one that prepared these sections. The data source for the Appaloosa homes was the Massachusetts LiDAR topo, the most recent, which I believe is twenty-twenty-one. So it's, it's recent. And then, so that set the base elevation. We double-checked it in Google Earth and it matched up perfectly. And what we did is we, those, those homes are tall, colonial, beautiful homes. So they are a full two stories and then, you know, a tall, sort of, I'll call it attic, you know, under the roof. We assumed thirty feet from the, the first floor to the peak of the roof. Again, I think that's underestimating, I think they're actually taller than that. But we went with thirty feet. And then, as you can see, they're walkout condition. So we assumed an eight-foot drop to the backyard. And then they, just from Google Earth and kind of studying, you know, it looks like they have the decks on the back and they're sort of elevated because they're at the first floor level. So that's how we came up with that.
Okay. And I, I just want to make sure you didn't misspeak. You said you underestimated the homes or overestimated the homes?
I...
That thirty feet is, is...
I feel the thirty, they could be taller than thirty feet.
Okay.
We didn't want to represent them taller than that.
Yeah.
But they, they may very well be taller than thirty feet.
Okay.
From first floor to the, to the peak.
Primarily because of the peak of the, the way the roof is pitched, yeah.
But that would not affect where the deck is necessarily.
Correct.
If you're in the attic, which, okay. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was an honest representation, that's all I was getting at.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you.
Thank you. So, and I'm not sure exactly how we want to handle this, so I will open the floor. Louise, I'm not sure if we wanted to walk through these. I, I guess first question, has the board had the chance to see the waiver list that was sent over and discussed? Okay. What is the preference of the board? And I, I don't know how typically you want to handle it. We can wa- I'm happy to walk through them one by one or if there are specific questions, you want to focus on certain, certain ones or...
Well, I'll leave that up to the board. Do we want to just start talking about the different waivers or do we need him to go through each waiver?
I think it would be fair to go through each waiver. If it's, if it's in, like, a not very big deal, then it shouldn't take a lot of time to talk about. And if some of them are, are more in-depth, then we should spend time on it.
Okay. Well, any suggestions?
I think that's a, a good approach, is to just, even if we're just glossing over them rel- relatively quickly,
Okay.
just to mention each one and then where there's any, you know, questions in, in need for additional information or review, you know, we can spend more time on those ones.
Okay. All right.
All right, great, thank you very much. So I will introduce the, with the waivers, but by all means, if anybody has any questions or talking points on it, I don't want to skip past anything if there is a desire to speak to them. So our setup here, the chapter and the specific section of the zoning code is in the left column or the second from the left column. In the section requirement column, if it's bolded, that is specifically referencing to a, a waiver request. If it's in that column and it's in italics, we left it in there just to provide context. And then the far-right column explains the request for why we are asking for that waiver, why the waiver is sought. The first one is, is more of a general ones and I think that one is pretty straightforward. And so, number two was really specific to the table and its reference to multifamily structures and structures not more than eight stories. So I guess we wanted to make sure that that, that is included in, in, as far as one of the waivers that we're requesting. Similarly, there is a, a reference to each structure containing more than twelve dwelling units. Not more than twelve dwelling units. Clearly, we would need a waiver from that reference as well. And then getting into, it's, number one here showing that middle column, the off-street parking should be required and none of the required in the yards. And on the right column, we have a reference. We lost one of the TVs. On the right, we have a column referencing specifically that the parking for building six, which if you recall is the first building, if you're coming off of Route twenty on the left, it's the, kind of, the lone wolf, if you will, on the left, there's the parking area in the front of that building. So it, it falls within that yard setback, so that's specifically what that is referring to. Again, number three, not, we're obviously exceeding a hundred and twenty-five units. As well as number two here that's bolded as far as, and on section seven D, the, the location of the parking, we have parking on multiple sides, not just the side rear or beneath. Call it the front. Relative to section seven, section K for inclusionary housing. Stephanie and Paul, I know that you both have had conversations about this one in particular and the need for it to be called out specifically. There's also the entire inclusionary housing section as well to be referenced. So I think that was, the last time that we had a conversation about it was still left to be determined how we wanted to approach that relative to this. So I know this discussion about it.
So the inclusionary housing requirements are really, they're subsumed in a chapter forty-B development. They're not, they're not applicable to a forty-B application because they are subject to the programmatic requirements of the subsidizing agency. So although generally I recommend against blanket waivers of zoning provisions or other local rules and requirements, in this instance, I think a blanket waiver is necessary and appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you. Then number three, section seven, part A one, relative to the height of the building. Our buildings are taller than in borough A and borough B districts, thirty-five feet and fifty feet, which we're close to, but will still require waiver of limited industrial. So those sections apply. For setbacks, we are slightly violating the front yard setback for pickleball court where a foot within as well as building six, it's forty-eight where fifty feet is required. So those, those sections are highlighted and noted and will be included. Number five, three A, paren's five, this, this is reference to something that we spoke about in a meeting, I think, three, three meetings ago, relative to the tandem parking spaces in the garage. There is a section in the zoning code that doesn't allow that. However, the board wants to handle that, we've talked about how those will be deeded to the same unit, so it wouldn't be an issue from that perspective. So however the board wants to handle it, whether it's waived or if it's not necessary, that's up to the board. So additionally, this section got a little bit confusing for us because there is a reference to, sorry, and I'm... reference. The way that the, the, the language is written is that all off-street parking and loading areas permitted and or required except for dwellings. So there, it feels like we are no longer applicable. Then it goes on further and saying which are located within residence A, B one, B two district or garden-type apartment or apartment districts, which we also aren't technically in. So this one, it actually tech- I don't think that we are, this, this, we fall under this because, again, we are residential dwelling and we don't, we're not in any of those districts. We did speak with staff on it and I think we got an agreement on that. To that point, the only, and I don't want to, and I'm not trying to minimize, the, the section that we would be including in here as far as looking for a waiver is that relative to the height of the curb in that the, the language requires a six-inch and as far as where the, the parking area terminates, our curbs are all a four-inch reel. So if it is deemed that this applies to our project, then we would be asking for a waiver from that six-inch curb to a four-inch.
May I ask a clarifying question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
For three C, and this is me maybe lawyering this a little bit, I would read except for dwellings, which are located within or adjacent to a residence A, B one or B two district, garden-type apartment or apartment districts, whether on the side or rear, as one clause. So I just want to understand, are you reading the requirements of three C not to apply to this development or to apply to this development?
We are not sure. I don't think that it does apply.
I see the lawyer rise in the background. She's jumping at the bat, right?
Struggling with it the same way as you. And I think actually, under either reading, it's not going to apply. So the first reading is, as you were suggesting, all off-street parking and loading areas permitted and or required except for dwellings which are located within or adjacent to residence A, B one or B two district, garden-type apartments or apartment districts. So that's the one way to read it. Or in, in which case it would be all off-street parking except for dwellings that are located adjacent to or within or adjacent to these. The second way to read it is to give another pause because there is a comma, although there's typically a comma before, which anyways, is all off-street parking and loading areas permitted and or required except for dwellings which are located within. And so it, it's that all off-street parking because what it's trying to do is it's providing additional parking requirements for commercial and residential uses as opposed to, or commercial and industrial or office uses as opposed to residential uses. So that's, that's why we were confused because that's a very logical reading of it as well because typically if there's increased kind of requirements relative to parking and loading and buffering of it, it applies to uses such as commercial uses, industrial, office uses. So, so, right. So we internally spoke with staff about it who, I, I think, kind of, everyone's kind of confused by the language of it. And so we, we kept it in in our waiver list and so I'm not quite certain how the board wants to deal with that. And, and Paul, I don't know if you've ever done a, to the extent that somebody interprets it another way in the future, the waiver's granted.
And I think my, I would just offer, my question was a little bit loaded. The way that I would read it would be if, if you are not located within or adjacent to a residence A, B one, B two district, garden-type apartment or apartment district, which I think is true, that you're not any of those things, that therefore all the off-street parking and loading areas permitted and or required shall be screened from all adjoining lots and said district is a requirement for this.
For those districts?
No. In this situation. And so I think if the point is we need a waiver for that, then maybe we need a waiver for that. But I, I read it as applying in this situation. But I defer to Paul.
Well, my recommendation would be to just presume it's applicable and grant the waiver as necessary because it's just the safest approach.
Yeah. Belt and suspenders.
Which is exactly why we kept it in.
Yeah.
Fair.
Great. Thank you.
Little one L law school hypothetical there. What does this comma mean?
Louise, just quickly, we had talked on the phone relative to number two, and just going back, that there was a previous project Wyman Farms, that there was some kind of...
I tried to do some digging and I have failed, so I'm gonna try and continue that research with town staff that were around for that decision to understand
Okay, thanks.
where that lands.
Just so everybody, yeah, that is relative to number two. When we met with Louise and Chris, we were struggling with exactly how to handle that. And so Chris mentioned that Wyman Farm maybe would have provided some precedent as far as how to address it in here. So it's still in process. We went through that one. All right. So we're going to leave in five and six as relative to signage. And just to note on that, we had, we did talk to Patty, Building Inspector, and we're going to include details and sections of, of our all temporary signage in our final comprehensive plan permit package that we will submit after this meeting, likely in the next week or two. We'll include the temporary signs as well, as requested by Patty. Section seven for...
So just to clarify, so that information is going to be in the record prior to the closing of the public hearing?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So number seven, section seven, and Paul, I hate to put you on the spot here, but this is another one that we're going to discuss that you potentially, I think that you had a conversation with Stephanie that maybe had some language relative to this to be added.
Yeah, so this is what I would say is a procedural waiver request rather than a substantive waiver request. An applicant is not required to obtain or request waivers from procedural requirements such as site plan approval or special permits. But what I usually do is when I'm preparing the waiver decisions, I leave it in there and then I note that the waiver is denied as unnecessary and then with an explanation that all other local permits are subsumed as part of the chapter forty-B process and no separate application is necessary. Just so that it's clear, because once a comprehensive permit is issued, it's still going to have to be administrate, administered. There's going to have to be supplemental of final plans, there's going to have to be review by staff. There's going to be a building permit application and then questions are going to arise as to whether something was actually approved as a waiver or not approved. So it's helpful to have that information in there to let who's ever reviewing this know this does not require any additional relief.
Thank you. Section eight, or, yeah, section seven, excuse me, sorry. Section seven, number eight, for section K inclusionary zoning. We talked about this already, this is relative to the previous conversation for, for that waiver request. This is another one that we wanted to talk about because the language, we weren't sure if it applied specifically and so whether to keep it, this is relative to whether this is viewed as a common driveway or not. The language within, within the bylaws references maximum number of residential units, or lots, excuse me, whereas this is units. So we, we weren't sure if this is something that we should maintain in here. The, the language relative to common driveways, it's, I believe it's more than four lots, whereas this is technically one lot and is this technically a common driveway? We, there is no definition of common driveway in the zoning bylaws. So we left this one similarly in because we want to avoid any confusion in the future.
And again, this would be one that would be denied as unnecessary, it's a procedural waiver. By, by granting approval of the plans as submitted, you're approving the access, the driveways. And so that's the only permit that they would need to approve that.
Right.
So it would be similar language to the last one.
Thank you. Ten, this one's pretty straightforward as far as the building permits.
So the, the only thing I would say about this one is that, you know, it would include a caveat that it's, it's waived consistent with the waivers as granted, otherwise they do have to comply. Right? So you're, you're not giving a blanket waiver of all of your zoning requirements in granting the comprehensive permit. So you're not going to grant a blanket waiver of this provision. What you're going to do is grant a waiver to allow them to proceed with the plans as submitted. submitted and as waived herein.
Makes sense.
And in our explanation column, we probably tried to explain that a little bit less eloquently than Paul just did, but.
Subject to building code and fire code, yeah.
Always, yep.
Number 11, which is Section eight, again, this one's a fairly standard one, as far as why we're requesting this, excuse me.
And so, lapse of comprehensive permit is by regulation, a minimum of three years, so a one-year lapse provision wouldn't be allowed anyway, so this waiver is necessary.
On that note, we are, we have talked with staff about, we are going to be, we're putting together just a kind of narrative phasing plan, to be submitted with the comprehensive permit package, just to demonstrate what our schedule will follow, relative to this.
And also, comprehensive permits are subject to the local rules and requirements that are in place as of the date that the application is filed, so any subsequent changes to your zoning bylaws would not be applicable to this project by definition.
Number 12, we will be requesting that relative to compliance with the zoning bylaw. Thirteen, again, this is what I was referring to, as far as the section on the inclusionary housing regulations, again. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are related to sewer and water installation and fees, we're not asking for a waiver from the fees, we are just referencing the agreed-upon waiver or fee schedule as set in the, as set in the development agreement, and the development agreement will be attached and is referenced here as well.
So one thing I would say with regards to fifteen and sixteen in particular, they're seeking a waiver from the sections in their entirety, I've got some standard conditions that talk about review and administrative approval by the water department and the sewer department, as it relates to connections and things of that nature, so that they're still complying with the technical requirements for connection, even though you'd be granting waivers of these provisions.
And again, we haven't agreed-upon fee schedule, you know, so that we worked through with Kevin and others. That's related to sixteen, seventeen's related to wetlands bylaw, we are in process with Conservation Commission, we, the only reason that we, well, I guess there are two technically reasons, that we didn't close our process with CONCOM at our final meeting, I would say four months ago now, was we didn't, we hadn't yet received our DEP number, their backlog, we do have that now, but we wanted to wait until we're at a place with this process, that the plans that we submit, that will be tied to our orders of condition with the CONCOM, would be the same set of plans, so I've talked to Aleah this week, mentioning that we're, I think that we're actually at a place where our plans are pretty much done and no more changes, so we'll be on, we're on the agenda for the June 18th meeting with CONCOM to finalize that piece with them as well, again, so just that way, it's the same set of plans for ZBA, and will be filed with CONCOM, just to avoid any confusion.
And once again, generally, my recommendation is the board not grant blanket waivers of local rules and requirements, here, they have listed a couple of provisions of the wetlands bylaws that they would need relief from, and that is certainly appropriate for them to request that, I wouldn't recommend a blanket waiver of the local bylaw and regulations in their entirety, and one of the main reasons that I generally insist on listing out the specific waivers, is because if the board grants blanket waivers, it leaves your decision vulnerable on an appeal, so one of the ways that you, you know, it's not very easy for an aggrieved party to challenge the grant of a comprehensive permit, but one of the claims that could be made, is that a board's decision was arbitrary and capricious, and if the board doesn't indicate that it was actually aware of the full nature of the relief that was requested, that could be a basis for an argument that the decision is arbitrary and capricious, so I think it protects the board, and it protects the applicant, to make sure that all of the waivers are specific, rather than general blanket waivers.
Thank you, let's hope, Paul.
I'll sit at the chair if I may, if you look, I think that we tried to winnow it down, we have sections 4.1 and 4.2.3.
Right, so my recommendation would just be not grant the blanket waiver, grant the specific waivers.
All right, now, under the submission and review of the permit application, number 18, just related to the number of hard copies required, asking for that waiver. And as far as number 19, there were two elements in this section specifically, the environmental impact analysis, which, again, through our coordination with CONCOM, and there's material documentation filed with CONCOM, that documents our approach, and our, you know, we filed our notice of intent, it details the natural resources on-site, the impact that we're expecting, and then the mitigation that we are, we are providing, and then, from the community impact report, we were requesting a waiver from that piece, and referencing our longstanding coordination with the town, as far as the development agreement and the various elements of that, related to the positive impacts on the community. We also did file fiscal impact analysis as well, relative to kind of the balance of, you know, the pros and cons, if you will, the ways on the town services, as well as the benefits from taxes and other fees and whatnot, which that's been on file in our folder. And actually, that's, that's the last one.
Questions, comments? Anyone?
No, that's very helpful, thank you.
I did have a bunch of questions, but they've been answered.
Been answered, exactly.
This dialogue, so that was, that was well done.
That was comprehensive.
Yeah.
Thank you, well, I appreciate the opportunity to do this, that it just, it saves a lot of back and forth, I think, so
Yes.
This method is good.
Great. Paul, any further comments?
Nope.
All right. So procedurally, next steps?
Well, I think we do need to set a special meeting for this hearing, which I think we polled the board in June 17th was
At 6:30.
Yes, at 6:30 was the time everyone was available, or the applicant as well, I believe, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for accommodating that, that's, that's great.
Yep, we understand, so do we need to make a formal motion around that?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I move to continue the hearing to a meeting at 6:30 PM on June 17th.
Second?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right.
Great, thank you, very much.
That was a lot, that's a lot of work, thank you for that.
No, well, we appreciate the ability to have some back and forth and coordinate on this, so, to make the most out of these meetings.
Well, I would also compliment the staff for all the hard work behind the scenes, it's a lot.
No, they've been gracious with their time, and I don't mean to be speaking about you they, like, Louise sitting right there, Louise
Through the chair.
Have been, have been great about working with us, and helping us out along in this process, for sure.
Well, you also are very good at what you do, and again
Thank you.
We've, I think, been abundantly clear on that, that if we had to see this parcel be developed, it would be, you would be a company that we would have selected, so thank you for that.
That's awesome, and we're excited to, we're excited to get started, and we think it's a great spot, and we're really looking forward to it.
So assuming just all the timelines meet up, if you had a crystal ball, when would you see the first shovel going in the ground?
This fall.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's our goal, and, and right now, we're lining up towards that, so, you know, really just locking in these permits is the last piece of it, so we are, we're ready to go.
Okay. Great.
We're excited to get going, and as I said, we'll have a construction schedule, and, you know, we'll get started on discussing kind of the pieces of that as we, as we move forward, and make sure that we have the appropriate communication with the neighbors and the butters, and, and, you know, make sure that we keep them updated on process and progress, and kind of next steps.
Well, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind me asking, what is the next, like, what do we do at the next meeting, is it closing it out, will we have a draft or decision at that point?
We're working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be a long meeting, we'll have a lot of reading to do for somebody.
Attorney Kiefer has actually very graciously and helpfully started preparing some of the findings, and the jurisdictional, the jurisdictional findings, factual findings, using the prior decision I drafted for this board from the point, so that's gonna be a very good, good beginning for me, and then I'm, I've already started working on the draft conditions.
So we'll have that well in advance of our next meeting, I assume, so we can review that, and have questions prepared, comments, so, okay.
Excellent.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks.
Okay, I think that might be our last agenda item, so if I could get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay.